Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the organization meeting of the City Council of April 16th, 2007, being called order at 8:00 PM. We have a roll call for the council.
Council members Menuchyan, Najarian, Quintero, Yusefian, Mayor Weaver.
Here. Flag salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Najarian, invocation by City Clerk Ardi Kasakian.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing. Almost 12 years to the day on April 19th, 1995, the city of Oklahoma was shaken by a terrorist bombing. One hundred and sixty-eight people lost their lives that day, including nineteen children. Our nation's innocence was shattered that day long before 9/11. This morning, horror revisited America on the campus of Virginia Tech, as over thirty students that we know of were gunned down and killed in a terrible act of insanity. Twelve years ago, President Clinton had the difficult job of finding words to console a nation. He said the following, and I quote, "Let us let our children know that we will stand against the forces of fear. When there is talk of hatred, let us stand up and talk against it. When there is talk of violence, let us stand up and talk against it. In the face of death, let us honor life. As Saint Paul admonished us, 'Let us not be overcome by evil, but overcome evil with good.' My fellow Americans, a tree takes a long time to grow and wounds take a long time to heal, but we must begin. Those who are lost now belong to God; someday we will be with them, but until that happens, their legacy must be our lives." End quote. Tonight, in these chambers, we have parents, children, brothers and sisters, the young and the old, as well as those at home watching this historic event. I could not find the words to express what I felt, and it would do justice to the legacy of those who perished and who lost lives today. So instead, I ask each person tonight for a brief moment to themselves to quietly pray and silently express their thoughts to whomever or however they so wish. Amen.
There we have your report.
The agenda for the organization meeting of the April 16th, 2007, was posted on Friday, April 13th, 2007, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next, please.
Next is the mayor's welcome.
Hello. Thank you for coming tonight. What's next?[222.34][222.34](Laughter) Hey, I just left a party of six hundred people that are waiting for me to come back and announce who's the next mayor. So, I'm anxious to go back there, so I will be shortened to the point. Thank you. Next, please.
Next is oral communications.
You're not going to read the traditional four or five lines? We have it all memorized.
Well...
One speaker, Barry Eamon, five minutes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council staff, of course, the public. I'm Barry Eamon with Vanguard. And looking at the agenda, I didn't, in discussing it with Clerk Kasakian, I didn't know if we could do this at this point, or if we should have done it prior to the mayor's election. But, we're going to do it now. One of the things that Vanguard did this last week, this past weekend, was a survey of some of the folks as to whether and who should be appointed mayor. And here are the results of that survey. Aaron Najarian, three people wanted him as mayor, and one didn't. Frank Quintero, two wanted him. And Tony Soprano got the most. He got six.[305.58][305.58](Laughter) And Bob Yusefian got four. Now, as we get ready to appoint the mayor at the second part of the program this evening, a couple of things that I would like to suggest, and that is that the person who is selected for mayor next April not be a candidate for the election in 2009. That we should consider that so that we keep the playing field level, instead of giving anyone a particular edge. There are enough edges for incumbents anyways, but I think that that should be one of the things that we should consider. And I would also like to suggest, even though it has nothing to do with the mayor's appointment, that the council, the, consider the appointment of a former, or future former, council member Menuchyan to the position of commissioner at the Bob Hope Airport. And I think that he certainly has knowledge and interest, and he's certainly not going to go anyplace flying on planes, because he doesn't like that. So, with that, I'd like you to consider those points, and certainly, as Tony Soprano isn't here, to be able to be appointed mayor, that maybe we consider Mr. Yusefian as being the person appointed for mayor, and Mr. Menuchyan being appointed on the airport commission. With that, I will give City Clerk Kasakian the outcome of the Vanguard poll this week, and he can certainly pass out out. Thank you. I'm Barry Eamon for Vanguard.
Thank you. What is next, please?
Next is a new business, and from the city clerk, a report on election and canvas. Resolution of the canvas of the vote of the general municipal election held on Tuesday, April 3, 2007.
Thank you. Mr. Yusefian?
May I move 4A1.
Second.
Move first and second. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Menuchyan, Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Yusefian?
Hi.
Mayor Weaver?
Hi. Next, please.
Item five is the oath of office to Glendale Community College Board of Trustees. Members-elect Tony Tartaglia and Vahe Perumian, and they will be introduced by President of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Armenia Hagopian.
They want to do it here, eh? Welcome.
Good evening, honorable councilmen, and I want to congratulate you, Mr. Weaver, for coming back. I'm Mr. Draymond, and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
It gives me distinct pleasure tonight to introduce two outstanding young men who have done already quite a bit for Glendale College, but I thought it'd be great to give you a brief synopsis, even though the viewers...
I know more than I ever want to know about Tony.[491.41][491.41](Laughter) But if you want, I'll summarize it again.
Oh, I'll tell you about both of them. How's that?
Okay.
Dr. Vahe Perumian was first appointed as a Glendale Community College trustee in June 2005, and he was chosen from a field of sixteen candidates. He holds a PhD from Physics, of Physics, in the University, from University of California at Los Angeles, those of you who are UCLA fans, where he also received his bachelor's and master's degree in physics. He's currently an outstanding researcher specializing in space sciences and space weather at the Institute of Geophysics and Planetary Physics at UCLA, where it receives the funding from NASA and the National Science Foundation. He has been an educator over eighteen years. He has earned the UCLA Department of Physics and Astronomy Outstanding Teacher Award for 2001, 2002, 2003, and 2005. He also is a faculty member at University of Phoenix, where he leads their mathematics, algebra, and critical thinking and research programs. He has served in this community in multitude of organizations over many years. He's lived in this community for a long time. He's just a multi-multi-talented person. He's a pilot. He's a photographer, so he understands our technology programs, so he understands our arts programs, and he has extreme knowledge of construction engineering. And this young man comes from a solid family of PhDs, and I've known the family for a long time, and Glendale College is very, very proud and honored to have him. When I think of Dr. Perumian, I think of multi-talented, multi-talented, and multi-talented. Would you like me to introduce...
Sure. Bring him up, and then you can read Tony's.
Um, next, I move to a very dear person, Mr. Tony Tartaglia, who received his BS in Engineering from CSU A and an MBA in Pepperdine. And when I think of Mr. Tartaglia, I see resources, resources, and resources for the college, as that is his track record for Glendale Community College so far. As many of you know, he's the Public Affairs Manager at Southern California Gas Company, and he's been there for over eighteen years. He's responsible for government relations, local media, contract negotiations, and local charitable contributions. And, for those of you who don't know, he has worked on behalf of this community for thirteen years, and he was the president in 2006 of Glendale Parks and Recreation and Community Services Commission. He was a member of Glendale Charter Revision Commission, and also the Board of Directors for Glendale Community College for several years. And the college really, really benefited from his leadership as he was serving on the, our foundation board. He was the chairman of our Measure G Bond Oversight Committee. And, again, when I, when I think of Mr. Tartaglia, I think of resources and resources for the college, and Dr. Perumian, I see multi- and multi-talented individuals. So how can we go wrong, folks? And I thank the public for voting for both of them to come back. So, Dr. Perumian and Mr. Tartaglia.[723.01][723.01](Applause)
Hey, I've gained new appreciation for you. All I have is BS from SC.
Ah, there we go.
You got PhD from UCLA.[742.69][742.69](Laughter) Well, I love the engineering connection.
Well, I see myself as a lifelong learner, so, still goes on.
All right, we will now administer the oath of office, after which we will also introduce our Glendale Unified School Board members, following which, item six, you'll be able to make a few comments. So please, if you will, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Vahe Perumian.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.[822.01][822.01](Applause)
Your John Hancock is required.
And while you sign your oaths of office before this audience who's gathered to bear witness to your signatures, I would also like to present to our elected officials this evening a copy of that sacred document outlining the principles of democratic authority, which you have sworn to uphold today, the Constitution of the United States of America. May the passion with which you ran for office and now take your oath burn as a bright beacon to guide you and the people of Glendale through your tenure. Good luck and congratulations again.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you. Stick around. You want to say anything?
Well, they will in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
At 5B is recognition of newly-elected members of the Glendale Unified School District who were sworn in earlier in the day at the Glendale Unified School District Boardroom, and they are Mary Boger and Nairi Nahavidiya.[888.82][888.82](Applause)
What do you mean you don't know? You're supposed to know where she is. Mary, Mary, quite contrary.
At number six, Mr. Mayor and Councilor, comments by these newly-elected officials, so...
Who wants to go first? Mr. Tartaglia, you got a long speech or a short one?
Please indulge me.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. Starbird, staff, and thank you, Mr. Kasakian. The city clerk, you did a fine job, and congratulations on your first endeavor into the campaign arena. It's been quite a journey from my initial appointment last fall to this evening, and I have many people to thank. When I started my election campaign kickoff, I gave my philosophy on one's life. Life is like a three-legged stool. It consists of three parts: spiritual, family, and work and community. I have many people to thank in reference to each leg of my stool. First, spiritual. I believe in God, and that he guides us through our journey in life. I would like to thank God for allowing me to serve Glendale Community College and its students. I believe that education is a key to successful life. Second, family. I have a wonderful family that has been supportive of me throughout my life, and especially this election. Many people have asked me why I've been so involved with Glendale Community College. The answer is that education is a major part of my family. I have some of them with me this evening, and I'd like to introduce them. Many of you have heard about me, speaking about my mother, Helen, and her educational endeavors. She received her associate's degree from the Community College of Southern Nevada in December of '05, and is currently getting her bachelor's degree in management information systems at UNLV. She is quite an inspiration. Mom?[1004.32][1004.32](Applause) I'd also like to introduce a wonderful woman and special person in our family, Jeanie Young. Jeanie?[1016.88][1016.88](Applause) I also have with me tonight my sister Madeline, who is a teacher and a preschool administrator, and her husband Andy.[1028.82][1028.82](Applause) My two nieces, Laura, who's getting her master's degree in special education, and her husband John, and little Hannah, and of course, I guess John and Hannah stepped out.[1040.23][1040.23](Applause) And also, my other niece Maria, Dr. Maria, our first doctor in our family, doctor from UCLA, and is teaching at Whittier College and UCLA, and her husband Charles couldn't be here this evening.[1052.83][1052.83](Applause) And third, work and community. I'd like to start by thanking my colleagues, our President of the Board, Dr. Armenia Hagopian. Quite an inspiration. Thank you, Armenia. Our Vice President, who couldn't be here this evening, Victor King, just recently had a baby. He's on diaper duty.
He had a baby?
Our member Anita Gabriellian, who's a good friend, has done well for us. Thank you.[1075.83][1075.83](Applause) And finally, my running mate, Dr. Vahe Perumian, who I can call today a good friend. On this side, excuse me.[1084.58][1084.58](Laughter) You've all been very supportive. Thank you. Next, I'd like to thank Dr. John Davitt, President Emeritus of Glendale Community College. When I asked John last fall, after my appointment, to help me with my election, he did not hesitate for one minute. His words were, "Tell me what I can do." Thank you, John, for all you've done for me and Glendale College. Also, I'd like to thank all the members of the Glendale City Council. Thank you for your support, but especially Councilmember Bob Yusefian and Aaron Najarian. They came to me early and said, "What can I do to help?" Thank you, gentlemen, very much for your vote of confidence. Within the community, there are many to thank, so I apologize in advance that I can't thank anyone, everyone, but however, I'd like, yeah, I know, however, I highlight a few that helped spread the word and helped lead the charge. First, my treasurer, who's at your party. Thank you, Dave. Joe Ivacy. Joe has been a good friend for many years, and did much to make sure my campaign was a success. Thank you, Joe. Also, some wonderful volunteers that helped with my campaign, Leila Sanbarbell, San Tanik Squires, and Sally Nielsen. They worked tirelessly to help, help with the details of my campaign. I'd like to thank the many faculty and staff of Glendale College that came to my support early in this campaign, especially Saudat Ariska Hanova, and the members of the California School Employees Association, Local 76 GCC. Your early support will not be forgotten. Also, Jeanette and Mark Sturdivan for opening their home, home to Dr. Perumian and I, to help speak to Glendale Community College faculty and staff members about our campaign. I'd like to thank Assemblymembers Paul Kocorian and Anthony Portentino, as well as Michael Antonovich for their early endorsement of my campaign. Also, School Board President, Chakeeb Chuck Sambar, and Past Mayors Carl Roggio, Larry Zarian, Rick Reyes, Sheldon Baker, and Ginger Brenberg. Ginger, I hope you're watching. I love you, honey. I would like to thank all of the members of the Glendale College Foundation. Each and every one of you helped me in so many ways. Special thanks to Ann Ransford, who is the glue of that organization for many years. I'd like to thank Jean Maluccio, and Liz Church, and Pat Anderson, all executive directors of our local chambers here, and their members of the board for their emotional, financial, and physical help during my campaign. I'd like to thank the Armenian National Committee for supporting my appointment and election to the board. Your members opened their arms in support for my campaign. I'd like to thank Dr. Maria Rochard and the board members of New Horizons Family Center, Linda Weaver, and the many members and friends of the Filipino-American Business Association of Glendale, and Chip Stone and the Glendale Education Foundation. Special thanks to John and Greg Kocorian and their family, Rick Dinger, Mary Ann Plumley, Greg Gregorian, Myrna Stanley, Bupesh Parip, Marlene Kakatao, Patty Strickner, and Peter Deroxian, and many others. Last but not least, I'd like to thank the voters of Glendale that cast their vote of confidence in me on April 3rd. I am truly humbled by your faith in me. I will work hard to keep the level of excellence at Glendale Community College high, and make sure your voice is heard. Thank you.[1259.33][1259.33](Applause)
Honorable Members of City Council, Mr. Starbird, ladies and gentlemen. Well, right before this meeting began, Tony and I compared speeches. He had the "thank you" speech, and I had the "plan for the future" speech. So, to write down a couple of people I had to thank, before I do so, I wanted to say that I'm honored to be sworn in today as a twenty-eight-year Glendale resident, with the blessing of Glendale voters, to continue my work with the Glendale Community College Board of Trustees for another four years. First of all, I wanted to introduce the members of my family that are here today. My wife Caroline, my wife for over fifteen years, who is, who has a master's in education, and is currently a teacher at John Muir Elementary. My daughter Tara, nine-year-old.[1312.33][1312.33](Applause) My parents, Nishan and Rubina Perumian, sitting there.[1320.15][1320.15](Applause) I have to say that my dad always jokes that he had to work to put three of, three members of our family through the PhD program at UCLA, my mother, myself, and my brother. So I always look to them for guidance and support. I hope my uncle, Jose Mosesian, is here. He was not only my uncle, but my campaign treasurer, and he worked very hard throughout the campaign. And my son, Tade, who's only three and would have terrorized this meeting, is at home watching this on TV.[1352.15][1352.15](Laughter) There are many others I'd like to thank, and of course, I'm going to forget half of the people that I wanted to thank. But let me start with Chris Meradian, who was my campaign manager, and the volunteers that he assembled for my campaign. Without his help, this would not have been possible. I would not have been standing here. And all this began two years ago with an appointment with the trust of my fellow board members. Anita Queen, yes, Gabriellian, thank you. Victor King, and Dr. Armenia Hagopian, who actually prodded me to apply for that position and has guided me ever since. Dr. John Davitt was instrumental in my getting acclimated to Glendale College, and I call him my mentor proudly. Elected officials, including Congressman, Congressman Adam Schiff, Assemblymembers Paul Kocorian and Anthony Portentino, whose endorsement was very, was invaluable. Many organizations came to endorse me, including the Glendale College California School Employees Association, and their current President, Saudat Ariska Hanova, the Armenian National Committee, and Ellen Asadriyan, their executive director. Last but not least, I wanted to thank three people, oh, four actually. My best friend of many years, Patrick Kazadyan, who happens to be the current lightning rod in the city of Glendale. Pierre Traxian, and last but not least, Jeanette and Mark Sturdivan, who opened their home to me, and opened my views to the rest of the faculty and staff at Glendale. Without their help, this would not have been possible. Thank you, voters of Glendale. I promise that for the next four years, I will go above and beyond what I've already done in the last two, and be a representative of the community on the college board, and be an outspoken spokesperson for the college and our community. There was one priority that I wanted to mention for me, and that's going to be textbooks. Aside from construction, aside from everything else that matters at the college, the matter of textbooks, the price of textbooks for our students, is at the forefront of the minds of all the students. And I'm going to be working hard to make sure that that last obstacle is removed from students attending college. Thank you very much.[1492.51][1492.51](Applause)
Thank you so much.[1495.51][1495.51](Music) Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm glad to be here with you again. And earlier today, Mr. Kasakian swore, swore sin at the school board meeting, and I'm here tonight, and thanks for the opportunity to be at the City Council meeting as well. I'm pleased to be here to start my role as a school board member, and to take on the responsibilities of the newly-elected school board member at Glendale Unified School District. In my community work, as well as my campaign, during my campaign, I kept hearing, and what I am very clear on, is that our parents and our community have shared goals and have common goals. Those common and shared goals are for our kids to succeed and to do well in our public school system. Our common and our shared goals is to protect public education and to prepare every single child, every single student who goes through the Glendale Unified Public School District, for them to be successful, whether or not they're on their way to college or university, or they are going into the workforce. That is our responsibility, and that is the work that is ahead of us on the school board. I look forward to working collaboratively with the school board members, the other ones who were at our meeting earlier today, and I look forward to working collaboratively with our city, and our city council members, and our new mayor. In our city and our schools, I want us to move beyond the battle lines of the past and move toward building the blueprints of the future. That is what we need in the city, and that is what we need in the school district. If we are to have kids who are going to be prepared to be able to be successful and academically prepared to take on the responsibilities of adulthood as our neighbors in Glendale, as our employees in Glendale, and as our employers in Glendale of the future. If the kids today are going to be the moms and the dads of the future, and we, as adults, have to set good examples for them, so that we become their role models of learning well and working well in our city. Most, and the way to do this is to be talking with one another and to be conversing with one another, to be having conversations not only with people we agree with, but those we disagree with as well. We must be able to have open conversations about what is good for our city, and at the school board particularly, what is good for our students. And in order to do that, it must be critical and open conversations. And I look forward to being able to do that in our city, on the school board, and with our city council members. I want to thank the candidates who ran, because I know firsthand, it's a commitment to be a candidate and to run. And I congratulate those in the city council who won, and those on the school board, Ms. Boger, who won. I want to thank Ms. Pam Ellis, who for twelve years served on the school board diligently and now is retiring. I would thank those who opened up their homes to me, but there's about twenty, twenty-five names, so I will not do that. We had, we had a lot of support, so I want to thank the teachers, the parents, the community leaders, and the community organizations who supported my campaign, my message, my candidacy, and got us to where we are today. I want to thank my friends and my family and our volunteers who are here in the back today, and they're already standing up, so thank you so much for all the work that you've done. And I will also introduce my family who are here as well, my mom and my dad, who really through sacrifice of their own and encouraging me and modeling community service is how it is that I'm able to do this community service here today. And I will name one name as my campaign manager, Nairi Kerseyan, who diligently worked and is an... and got us to where we are today. I want to thank my friends and my family and our volunteers who are here in the back today, and they're already standing up, so thank you so much for all the work that you've done. And I will also introduce my family who are here as well, my mom and my dad, who really through sacrifice of their own and encouraging me and modeling community service is how it is that I'm able to do this community service here today. And I will name one name as my campaign manager, Nayri Kerseyan, who diligently worked and is an example of a student who is now doing well and is about to get her bachelor's degree from USC, but that's okay. So really, I thank the residents of Glendale. I will be a school board member who will be accessible. I want to be hearing the parents and the teachers even more now than I did during the campaign. And so I welcome those relationships and invite all of us to be active and to get involved in making Glendale schools better than that they already have, and make sure every child who graduates is going to do well as an adult in Glendale. Thank you.
You're one heck of a Bruin. Welcome aboard. And Tony, your boss is at my party. When I get back, I'll pass on your kind words to him. What is next, please?
Well, next was supposed to be recognition of other school officials, family, and friends present, but I think those who spoke kind of took care of that already. We did see a college board of trustees member, Gabrielle, in the audience, and I don't know if I'm missing anyone else, but if you're here and we miss you, we apologize. Eight is comments by outgoing council members. And now we will recess.
For how long? About 10 seconds?
Sure.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Anybody want to leave? Y'all want to stay for the suspense? Everybody wants to stay. Let's start. Okay, for the new council, I turn the meeting over to the city clerk now. You better do this thing right, Artie. It's your first shot at this.
Once every year.
Here are all the witnesses. If he messes up, it's him, not the council.
City Clerk oath of office to John Drayman and Dave Weaver. So. Now repeat after me. I state your name.
I, John Drayman.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well.
And that I will well.
And faithfully discharge.
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Always helps to have another one. Present the plaque. Congratulations. Councilmember Drayman, if you'd like to take your place on the dice.
A little different from up here, eh?
Just a bit.
And now is comments. Now is time for comments by these newly-elected officials.
I assume I don't need one of these this time.
No more. No more.
This is a first for me.
You can talk for 20 minutes now.
Okay. I'll try not to.
I shouldn't give them ideas. Wow.
Wow.
20 minutes.
I'll read fast. Well, thank you all for coming. There are only two creatures of value on this earth, those with commitment and those who require the commitment of others. John Adams, our second president and leading voice for American independence, wrote those words more than 200 years ago. His commitment, his comment referred to the literal and figurative commitment inherent in the relationship between our government and those it governs. He believed that the embodiment of this contract should live on in the relationship between each American citizen and their elected government. In the last two weeks, I've heard the results of Glendale's election characterized in many ways. A quiet revolution, some have said, a mandate, others have insisted. Simply those in North Glendale getting nervous about development issues, others have claimed. And still others have insisted, in my view cynically, that election, this election represented a pushing back by one ethnicity against another. To all of these notions, I respectfully say nonsense. We did, we did something unique. Our campaign was far-reaching in terms of its personal contact. We literally went out and met our neighbors. We out-talked, out-walked, outworked, and outlasted our competition, and never gave an inch to those detractors who sought to make this election about personal, petty, or ethnic politics. We did the unimaginable in Glendale election history. We turned out voters in 30 out of 50 precincts to support our vision of Glendale. They voted in the north, the east, the west, and the south too, in order to demonstrate that their voices were with us and that at this time in Glendale's history, in this election, over controversies often issuing from this very council chamber, the future of Glendale's hillsides and canyons, residential neighborhoods and open spaces, our traditions as a city, our history together as one people, and our hopes for the future would be summed up on Election Day by the simple notion that our elected leaders must get on with the work on behalf of the citizens of Glendale and that business as usual was about to become a thing of the past. In short, the word ushered in from every corner of this city on Election Day was change. Let me state to my colleagues and reassure my constituents and all of our constituents that change we will and change we must. I've been characterized in many ways by many people during this election. A rabble-rouser, a troublemaker, a populist, and a patriot. Let me assure you that, as I have on the campaign trail for many months, that I did not run for election to this council to turn local government upside down. I am here to help heal. I am here to help bring the voice of the people of Glendale back to local government. I'm here to inspire both my colleagues and my constituents. I am here to help local government heighten its sensitivities and focus its sensibilities. I am here to usher in a new era of healthy debate in our city and to stand up for those who have not had a voice in our local government due to ethnicity, geography, or apathy. For the last two years, I have carried the message that together we share a common stake in this city, its future and how we are to be represented, that local government is meant to be our most available form of representation for every citizen of Glendale. What our citizens have previously only whispered to each other as neighbors has finally become an unavoidable and unmistakable statement at the ballot box. We insist upon change in the manner in which our elected officials represent people they are meant to serve. In the coming days, I will form an advisory committee to help guide me in the next four years of my term. As many of you have heard me say at dozens of receptions and coffees across every inch of this city, I ask you for your vote, but your job does not end there. I also ask that you stick with me as advocates in your neighborhoods and all across the city. I need your assistance, and I need your support. I will ask our local government, I'll ask that our local government support and sponsor programs that foster a sense of community, that honor the character, history, and traditions of our neighborhoods and of our city. I will ask that one such project, which former councilmember Rafi Manukian and I plan to propose together this year, be adopted and endorsed by our city council to capture photographically a day in the life of this great city, to bring diverse elements from all corners of our city's life under one banner, which will read simply Glendale, and that this photographic compilation be printed and bound and sold to benefit our Glendale Library's Historic Collections area. I will encourage my colleagues to support the return of local council sidewalk hours in neighborhoods throughout this city and support town hall-style meetings. I will encourage this council to support the effort, as I know my colleague, Mr. Weaver, already does, to assist in returning the 4th of July fireworks program to La Crisena, which has been a tradition enjoyed by Glendale residents for the last 17 years. I will be working for and seeking support from this council to bring the Adams Square Merchants Association and the Adams Hills Homeowners Association together, not as one organization, but rather as a cohesive unit, which might, if this council works together, encourage the residents and merchants of this area to pull in the same direction and bring the same type of harmony and community spirit that we enjoy in Montrose. I will hold my colleagues' feet to the fire about finding the leadership necessary to bring needed soccer facilities to the 3,000 or so young people in Glendale who are currently underserved by our facilities. If this can be accomplished by the addition of needed park space in South Glendale, so much the better. I will strive to help this council find the consensus necessary and the leadership it requires to preserve the Mountain Oaks tract and place it in the hands of a public agency where it can become Glendale's most accessible recreational open space. And I will help lead the way to a greater sense of governmental openness, civility, tolerance, goodwill, and the opportunity for every citizen in every neighborhood of whatever ethnicity, so long as they place above all the desire to be a contributing member to the makeup, character, and traditions of Glendale. To my fellow candidates who did not prevail in this footrace, I ask you to persevere. I encourage you and your constituents to stay involved, to remain impassioned and informed voters, and never give up. Your sense of commitment in this campaign has honored the process about which John Adams wrote more than two centuries ago. You have made a difference, and you have changed local government for the better. For those who supported my candidacy and our volunteers on whose shoulders I have been elevated and carried to these council chambers, I thank you for your support, for your time away from your families, for enduring blasting hot dusty roads canvassing door-to-door, and for enduring lots of cold coffee and many uncertain days and nights. You honor me with your friendship and your belief that we can and will make a difference in this city. To those of you who did not support me, to those of you who are afraid of what my election might mean to your future, and to those of you who are concerned that my election might signal a mandate to diminish your role as a full participant in this city because we do not share the same ethnic background or culture, I ask you for your patience. I ask you for your participation, and I ask you for your guidance as well. For when all is said and done, we as citizens of Glendale all desire safe neighborhoods, good schools, the quality of life which caused us to become stakeholders in this great city in the first place. Together, we will educate each other. Together, we will find common ground for the common good. And finally, to my new colleagues on the council and to city staff, many of whom I have known and worked with for several years, I ask you to rededicate yourself to something we haven't seen around these parts for many years, an energized citizenry, which expects excellence from us and who can inspire us if we allow them to do so. An election is not about victory or defeat. It represents a rare opportunity to move beyond our personal issues and our petty political drama. It's a chance to wipe the slate clean and start over, to take a new direction and to escape the simple definitions which otherwise have described us in the past. We are blessed with the promise of renewal, and we must be open to that promise. Let this election stand for more than politics. Let us move forward into this term with a sense of purpose, which recognizes that the power and the trust and the political capital invested in us as elected officials flows from the ground up, from ordinary citizens. To these citizens, let us pledge our advocacy, not because it is the politically expedient thing to do, but because it is the right and fair and decent thing for all public servants to do. We will not always agree. There will surely be differences of opinion ahead, and those of you who are my friends today, I can guarantee you that the future will hold the prospect that some of you will see steam coming out of your ears, but I thank you for attending this evening. I only serve as an extension of your determination to participate in this election process. I have immense gratitude and fondness for you all. I'd like to simply wish that we all move forward together and let the work ahead begin. Thank you.
I'll wait till later. What's next?
Next is Mayor Weaver's parting comments.
Okay, now I'll speak. Well, I didn't have anything. What a time to call. Excuse me.
That was me.
Well, I'll never match John as long as I live in voice projection or as an orator. I think I'm pretty good, but I can't match John, never could, never will. It's going to be interesting to listen to you in years to come. I ran for council to win a seat. I got a seat. I've heard so many reasons why I'm lucky to be sitting here, but I believe I'm sitting here for one reason. I had support across the spectrum of the residents that live here, black, white, Asian, Latino, Armenian, Anglo, you name it. Every single group I had support in. That's what Glendale is. It's a melting pot of many different cultures, 65 languages spoken in our school system. What does that tell you? The city belongs to all of us. And as I've told John already, the day you make your first vote up here will start to make, for want of a better word, enemies. And every time you make a vote, you're going to have somebody not like what you did. And let's see where you are in four years. I've done six campaigns now, won four in a row, and I've managed to survive those votes that I took, those detractors that I made. I still held enough ground with the populace to get reelected. I believe that, and I've always said, I have voted my conscience what I think is best for Glendale. I have offended my friends at times. I've made new friends. I have pleased my detractors sometimes and further infuriated them. But I always did my best. I lived here all my life, and I'm not going anywhere. Why would I ever want to do anything to hurt the city I was born and raised in? I never will. I wanted this campaign more than any I've run because I think the previous councils have laid the groundwork for a great future in this city. There is absolutely work to be done in residential areas. I've set its high priority for me, and I will be pushing it as hard as I can to move fast. Have to understand, government of all sectors moves at a snail's pace, much slower than you. We're gonna have a great working relationship, I'm positive of that. Thank you.
Councilmembers, staff, it is now my privilege to announce that as provided in the Glendale Municipal Code, Section 2.04.020, that the business before the council is the selection of a mayor. The chair will now entertain nominations for that office.
Mr. Kasachian, I would like to put several names on the nomination. I'm gonna start with John Drayman, start with Arun Ajarian next, Bob Yusefian, Frank Quintero, Dave Weaver, and Tony Soprano.
I voted for Tony.
Is there any other nominations?
Well, Mr. Kasachian, I nominate John Drayman. I nominate John Drayman for mayor.
So we take the vote in the order that they were nominated?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
And alphabetically.
Actually, I should direct my comments to the city clerk. There are two options before the council. One is to call the roll for each individual name as that individual is nominated, or you can call the roll and the council member can note the individual of their selection that they would like to be mayor. As you go through that roll, the person that reaches the majority will be the mayor. So those are two options. Both are sanctioned under Robert's Rules of Order.
Do I still have to leave Tony Soprano on the list?
Tony Soprano's not eligible to be mayor in this city.
Shocks.
I know it comes to the city attorney.
How do we get to that point, Mr. Howard? Do we have to take a vote of this council to find out which method?
I think just the discussion amongst you right now quickly could resolve that.
Mr. Drayman?
Yes, sir. Well, I hate to be the first to leave the party. However, as honored as I am to receive this nomination, I will decline this nomination and ask that it be removed. I am honored, as I say, and I hope to have the opportunity to serve this city as its mayor, but I don't believe that this is the time, and I don't believe that I am ready. So I respectfully would ask that my name be removed. Thank you.
Okay, well, since I made Mr. Drayman's nomination, I guess I have to disagree with him. I think he is ready. And all you need to do is basically know how to run a meeting, which I think you do, but most important of all, the mayor sets the agenda for the meetings and handles the time at the podium when there's different hearings and so forth. And that's why I nominated you, because I think you're more than capable of doing it, and we need someone who's going to have, as you mentioned, an unbiased approach and going to treat people with the kind of respect that they deserve when they come to the podium.
Mr. Howard? If a nominee withdraws their name, do we take it off the list, or?
It'll stay on the list until the individual who dominates the individuals will agree to remove that name.
Okay, well, that's, thank God for Robert's Rules of Order. Okay, I would prefer to have his name.
Just don't do it. Well, you wanna go down the line and verbatim, and we say who we think ought to be the mayor?
Well, Mr. City Clerk, since you're running the meeting, I think I nominated Mr. Drayman for pretty much the same reasons, but it's apparent that Mr. Drayman does not wish to be the mayor. You can't force people to do something they don't wanna do, and I have no intention of doing that. So I would respectfully withdraw my nomination of Mr. Drayman, and I appreciate the fact that your concerns are there, and I understand, I can guarantee you one thing, you will definitely be mayor one day, and sooner than later, hopefully, and I think you will do a very good job.
If my notes serve me correctly, Councilmember Yusefian, that would leave from your nominations Councilmember Ajarian, yourself, Councilmember Yusefian, Councilmember Quintero, and I'm assuming you're withdrawing Tony Soprano.
Yes, I was kidding about Tony.
So how do you wanna do it?
And Mr. Weaver, he also mentioned.
And Councilmember Weaver.
You wanna go down and ask who we want? Or we'll call one at a time?
It's the council's pleasure how they wanna vote, how you'd like to proceed. Call the roll, and you can announce your choice for mayor, or we can call the roll in the order of each individual who has been nominated.
Well, John, what do you think?
Why don't we just do roll call straight through, rather than go through a series of five or six votes, or, well, not five, four, and more potential votes?
Certainly appropriate.
If that is the pleasure of the council. Well, it's not an order of nomination, it's the order of the roll call.
Councilmember Ajarian's point is that you will call the roll of the individual council member, the council member will state his selection or choice for mayor.
So we cast our vote?
Cast your vote.
There will be multiple roll calls, there will be a single roll call.
I agree.
So this is a cumulative total, then, basically, is what we're talking about?
Well, you just say who's your number one choice, and if there's three?
Just indicate who your choice is for mayor.
Here you go, guy.
I did not.
Welcome to the city council.
According to Robert's Rules of Order, and you said that is so, I did not withdraw my nomination.
That's correct, you did not.
And your nomination is still on record, Councilmember Quintero.
So you're gonna do it alphabetically?
We will go alphabetically, it will be Councilmember Drayman with his preference first.
Welcome.
Well, again, I thank my colleague, that has an unusual sound to me, I'm not used to that, I thank my colleague, Mr. Quintero. However, again, I am not going to vote for myself, I will not serve, and I cannot serve at this time. So let me offer you instead a surprise. I didn't want to go to a thermonuclear moment here, but I will abstain. And the reason I will abstain is the following. As most of you understand who know me, I've campaigned across this city talking about the promotion of the traditions of our city, and that includes the traditions here. Typically, though it's not in our charter, typically we rotate through these seats, through the housing and redevelopment agencies, and typically the president or the chair of the redevelopment agency becomes mayor. I'm abstaining because, as many of you know, and Mr. Yusefian knows as well, that he made a rather large campaign contribution to me. That is one reason I am abstaining. Secondly, I am abstaining because it has been mentioned in the paper and to many people directly on the sidewalk that my presence here in the council is viewed by some as a statement that I will vote with these two gentlemen immediately to my left and right as some sort of a counter-ethnic block. That isn't going to happen either. So I'm abstaining for this reason. I would like four of our council members to put whatever personal political dramas that are going on that I'm not yet completely aware of aside, and to ask two of them, or one of them, to step across that threshold and vote for someone perhaps that they are not fond of politically, but who they know can still do the job. And so I will sit this one out, open the door, and see which of our council members is willing to walk through. Thank you.
He's good.
Mr. City Attorney, for point of clarification, if they can't select anyone tonight, do I get to still run the meetings?
Correct.
In serious response to your point of clarification, the answer is no. Meeting by meeting, they will have to appoint a mayor pro tem under our charter.
Well, Councilmember Ajarian.
I will cast my vote for Bob Yusefian.
Councilmember Quintero? I'll cast my vote for Arun Ajarian.
Councilmember Weaver?
Arun Ajarian.
Councilmember Yusefian?
Yusefian. Okay, Mr. City Attorney, now what?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, consistent with our charter, a tie vote gets carried from meeting to meeting, and each meeting would have to be run by a mayor pro tem appointed by the city council at the start of the meeting. And we have a meeting tomorrow evening, and so this matter should actually be continued. We'll post the notice on the door as required by the Brown Act that this item will be continued until next week unless a council member, well, since it was a tie, it can be any council member, can vote and move to reconsider.
I'll move to reconsider.
I'll second that motion.
And the only thing I'd like to say is, I guess to my colleagues, I'm honored by your votes, Mr. Weaver, Mr. Quintero. I would, I guess, urge you to put some faith in Mr. Yusefian and his ability. After all, the mayor's duties are largely ceremonial and charged with running the meeting and setting the agenda, and I believe that Mr. Yusefian is certainly able to do that. I think that when he's wielding the gavel, perhaps he'll spend a bit more time listening to our comments than preparing his own and expressing his opinions, and he does get to speak last. And I think with that combination, I'm confident that Bob could run a heck of a meeting and get us on a pretty good course. And with that in mind, I would, I'm not getting many warm looks from my colleagues, I would beg of you to see fit to have Mr. Yusefian be our mayor this year.
There is a motion for reconsideration and a second on the floor, Mr. City Clerk. We will now have further discussion.
Reconsideration of?
Just a motion to reconsider the vote, so you can get back to the point where you were before you had a tie vote.
You have any meeting?
And Mr. Drayman can vote on that, correct?
Yes, to reconsider, yes. Councilmember Drayman?
I will abstain for the same reasons.
Councilmember Ajarian?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintero?
No.
Councilmember Weaver?
No.
Councilmember Yusefian? Uh, Councilmember Yusefian?
Yes. Boy, we're not setting a very good example.
So, City Attorney, what now?
We have a mayor pro tem tomorrow night.
We'll have a mayor pro tem tomorrow night, and this item will be back on the agenda tomorrow. It'll be continued.
Yes, Mr. Clerk? Mr. Clerk?
Yes.
Need to point out, we would normally have had scheduled in tomorrow's agenda your decision on a chair and vice chair for both the Housing Authority as well as the Redevelopment Agency.
I have to postpone those, too.
Put those over.
I don't see any reason to put those over.
They're on the agenda.
They're on the agenda, but that presumes you can make a decision. Usually, mayor goes first, because that is generally a determiner of then those who are available for the subsequent agencies. It doesn't mean you can't do it in reverse.
Right. Redevelopment and housing are different issues altogether.
I think that'll be subject to both the agency and the Housing Authority's decision tomorrow.
And who's the mayor pro tem tomorrow night? Do you know?
I put it to the list, even Mr. Drayman.
The mayor pro tem tomorrow night?
Be Mr. Drayman and Mr. Menuchian's otherwise spot on the mayor pro tem rotation.
He can pass on that, too, tomorrow night.
So you get to be the mayor whether you want it or not?
No, he can pass on that tomorrow night, too.
Just for one meeting?
For the one meeting.
Mr. Howard?
Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Howard, Jim?
There is no new mayor, so there's no comments about the new mayor.
Then, as a, then...
We can't even reconsider, so we can't even change our vote.
Is there any discussion, is any discussion relevant at this point in the process, or is that out of order because the only item on the agenda is the?
You've still got ties. You can, if you wanna put up another motion to reconsider, that would certainly be appropriate.
I guess I'd like to think out loud and perhaps engage my colleagues in some discussion as to what, if anything, would we foresee changing?
Why not posit another motion to reconsider with a second and then open it up for full discussion and then discuss it for as long as you want?
For what purpose, Mr. Howard?
Well, if there's...
Just to discuss this.
Councilmember Ajarian is noting the purpose.
This person has nothing to discuss.
I make a motion for reconsideration.
Second.
Okay, now discuss.
Okay, so what we're doing is putting this over till tomorrow, and presumably, I think Mr. Drayman would continue with his feelings and maintain his abstentions. And would we, I'm not sure, where would you foresee going with this, gentlemen? I mean, is there, would we have any hope in resolving this?
I haven't the full gist. Go home and say a few prayers.
For whom?
For you, for one. For all of us, for another.
I think that's...
Except for Mr. Drayman, who can sit back and relax.
Well, I think that's what people in this city very often do on Tuesday nights.
That's good, too.
The drinking or the praying?
The praying, not that. The praying part, not the cocktail. This is not, for me, anything fun to be doing this. I promised a change in the manner in which this city government interacts with the public, and I want it to begin now. I want my colleagues here to work with one another. I'd like to see a four-nothing vote for a new mayor. I've opened this door, not to be clever or cute, I've opened this door to try to get two of my colleagues, or one of them, to walk through that door and put some of the personal partisanship behind us, because I view that, and I think the residents of this city view that, as one of the obstacles that we face here on Tuesday nights. I've stood right there many nights. It's not so painful, it really is not. We've had some terrific mayors, right here from the city council, one, two, three, three of them, plus the man who's chair I'm occupying at this stage, Mr. Menuchian. Any of these men can do it, they have done it. It's up to you, gentlemen.
Well, let me just say, we have some very important land use issues that are gonna come up in the coming year, and as a matter of fact, I think that was the main issue for many voters in this city, land use and how we're going to go about doing all of the different things that clearly a majority of the voters want us to do. And so that's one of the reasons that, number one, I was hoping Mr. Drayman would take it, and number two, Mr. Ajarian would take it. So that's where I stand. The mayor is just a ceremonial position, however, he does get to set the agenda, and he does get to focus on all of the different hearings that we have specifically pertaining to land use issues. So for me, I don't know where we're gonna go, but that's what I'm interested in doing for the next two years, to try to resolve the things that I was elected to do six years ago.
Councilman Yusefian?
I think there's this assertion that if certain individuals are elected, land use issue's not gonna be resolved. I just wanna let you know, as you have watched the city council, the way things get on the agenda is a council member asks for it, the city manager schedules it. If there is a consensus on behalf of more than one council member, then it's scheduled earlier. So I don't see that issue changing one thing or another. And as a matter of fact, I think that was the main issue for many voters in this city, land use and how we're going to go about doing all of the different things that clearly a majority of the voters want us to do. And so that's one of the reasons that, number one, I was hoping Mr. Drayman would take it, and number two, Mr. Najarian would take it. So that's where I stand. The mayor is just a ceremonial position, however, he does get to set the agenda and he does get to focus on all of the different hearings that we have specifically pertaining to land use issues. So for me, I don't know where we're going to go, but that's what I'm interested in doing for the next two years, to try to resolve the things that I was elected to do six years ago.
Councilman Yusefian.
I think there's, there's this assertion that if certain individuals are elected, land use issue is not going to be resolved. I just want to let you know, as you have watched the city council, the way things get on the agenda is a council member asks for it, the city manager schedules it. If there is a consensus on behalf of more than one council member, then it's scheduled earlier. So I don't see that issue changing one thing or another. There are, there are land use issues that need to be dealt with, and I figured if I had become the mayor, I would read you the list of what I would like to accomplish for the next year or so. And it's going to be very hefty. Maybe that's why, maybe they don't want me to be the mayor, because in a second thought, you know, maybe it would be better, because they'll be working their fingers to the bone. There's so much to be done in the city, since it hasn't been done for a few years. And, Sir Drayman, the only way anybody's going to walk through that door is if there is a reconsideration. Unless we can reconsider our vote, nobody's walking through any door. And this is going to become, this is going to set a precedent, which basically says, right off the bat, the easiest vote in the city of Glendale, we can't get three votes. So how do you think the rest of the year or the rest of the four years is going to go?
May I?
Yeah.
There's a saying, old American saying out there, goes like this, "This is your little red wagon, you guys are pulling it, I'm not going to climb in." I'm the, I'm the newcomer here, and this is part of the business as usual that I just don't understand, and I think many of our, our residents don't. On the one hand, it's ceremonial, but we can't cast that vote, so...
Mr. Drayman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to get to another vote.
Well, there, there has been a motion made and a second. Is there any further discussion?
To reconsider the vote.
This is for reconsideration, yes.
No.
That is what the motion is? All right, well, roll call. We'll be, Councilmember Drayman?
Abstain.
I'm going to abstain.
Councilmember Najarian?
Yes.
Councilmember Quintero?
Yes.
Councilmember Weaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Yusefian?
Aye.
Okay. I would like to nominate Ara Najarian again, see if perhaps Mr. Najarian is willing to take it.
Roll call.
Are there further nominations for the office of mayor? Hearing no further nominations, we will proceed to the roll call. Councilmember Drayman?
I'll abstain.
Councilmember Najarian?
Najarian.
Councilmember Quintero?
Najarian.
Councilmember Yusefian?
Najarian.
Uh, Councilmember, I apologize. Councilmember Weaver?
Najarian.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you. And where are we?
Well, we're at, we're at comments by new mayor.
Well, uh, where do I start?
I have a speech that I just used, it went over pretty well, I don't know.
Um, welcome to Glendale, folks. This is, clearly, this is not the manner in which I would have preferred to be elected mayor, but I am still honored that my colleagues have seen fit to trust me at the helm of the city after probably the city record for reconsiderations and tie votes. It is sad, however, that my wife Darlene and my two children, and my, my mom and dad and my siblings could not be here this evening to share in this joyful moment. And, and as I've observed council for the last three years, you know, it's clear, one of the primary responsibilities of the mayor is to make sure that the business of the city, our city council meetings are conducted efficiently, fairly, and deliberately. I am not going to let a council member drone on and on about matters that are irrelevant to the issue at hand. I will be the judge of what is relevant. However, before I cut any council member off, I'll give them a chance to tell me where they're going, acting much like a judge, and my experience is, is as a judge, as an attorney, as a judge pro tem, and I'm going to ask them for an offer of proof. Where are you going, Mr. Drayman, as example? You'll say, "Mr. Mayor, this is what I'm getting at." And if I feel that that's relevant, I will certainly let you move on with your remarks, and hopefully we'll reach a, a final decision. And we've seen many residents that come to council, and many of them have children at home, and they've put the dinner on the stove, and who take the sacrifice to travel here. I'm going to institute something new, also that I've seen, and that's going to be a request for priority when they submit a card. This is a privilege. Again, it's something that I've seen in the courtrooms with a long list of attorneys waiting, and if attorney has another hearing somewhere, he'll go to the clerk and he'll say, "Please, ask the judge for priority." And I'm going to put you on the honor system, I'm going to hope that your requests for priority are valid and that they will not be abused or used for any tactical advantage in the course of a discussion. And we're going to use this for oral communications and for any types of hearings with a large number of speakers. I'm going to encourage children to attend our meetings, and with the, with the approval of their parents, I would like to introduce them to the city, because I think there's nothing finer for a young child to do than come to see democracy in action. But there is...
You sure you wanted them here tonight?
There is, there is something to be learned, and I think a lot of what we heard, the remarks from our school board member and our college board members, that we are really, at all times, training our youth to take over when we go on, and we do pass on politically as well as in life. So we, we really need to prepare ourselves and have our youth ready. I'm going to ask you not to cheer or boo during the course of discussion or debate. This isn't a football game. We're not cheering for USC or UCLA. These are comments that the speaker or that councilmen are making that they truly believe in, and it's not a matter of how much support within the room we have. This isn't the Roman Coliseum, we're not out to set the lions upon the Christians and get the thumbs up or the thumbs down from the crowd or from the, from the council. And we're just councilmen, we're not emperors, we're not kings. One day, you can have a small shop in Montrose, and the other day, you're, you're sitting up at the, at the dais, making the decisions. I'm going to insist on appropriate behavior from everyone, and the word is decorum, ladies and gentlemen. Decorum means appropriate speech and decency, and we're going to have decorum when I'm mayor. Some things that I've been thinking about that I'd like to see happen in the most immediate time, we need to clean up our building and permit division. We have a consultant out, we have a report coming in. I know Mr. Yusefian mentioned that quite often, it's a very good idea that we bring that up to speed and find out where we are. We need to develop our parks, both open space and playing fields. I'd like to see the, and John mentioned it as well, the, the mountain oaks area, and as well our, our vast acreage that we have, developed into hiking trails and places where people can gain access, perhaps have some restroom facilities and some ability for people to get into the verdugos and enjoy them. We need to make full use of them. I'm trusting George Chapchan, our parks director. George, are you here? I'm trusting you in that, and I'm also trusting you in an aquatics park. And you've heard me talk about it, and we start setting aside money for it, and we, we owe that to the youth of our city, and not just the youth, but to the adults and the seniors. It's a resource that the entire community can make good use of. I'm going to continue to make best use of my opportunities, as I sit on the MTA Board and on the MetroLink Board. We have to improve our transit continually. We are going to be starting soon the Tri-City Connector, that's going to connect Pasadena, Glendale, Burbank, and connect the Orange Line and the Gold Lines, and we're taking strides in that. We're going to have this brand-new bus service that's going to hopefully get people out of their cars. It's going to be a quick express that's going to get people from one end of the valley to the other, and folks who want to go to have a, a dinner in Pasadena, and likewise, folks in Pasadena can jump on this connector and come right into our city. We're going to be getting new B-line buses, replacing our aging equipment and adding to our, our current inventory of buses, and they're all going to be clean buses using the natural gas. And this is what we owe our residents. We're going to include the bus shelters that councils previously have discussed. So we're going to have to make transit a way of life, ladies and gentlemen. We can't just keep expanding our roads. We're going to have to get onto transit, and I'm plan, as mayor, I take the B-line several times a month, and I'd like to turn out some events where people can either join me or at least publicize the use of the B-line. I have requested a report from Jono and Steve Zern about our, our B-line system, our transit system, as well as efforts to reduce the traffic congestion that we, that we have through the light synchronization program and numerous other technologies. We're going to be hearing from that. We all know traffic is bad. When we did our survey, everyone told us traffic is horrendous. It's really not that bad compared to the West Side, but that doesn't mean we will stop working at it and try and make it the best possibility. You know, we love Glendale because it's a safe city, and I'm going to continue to support our police chief, Randy Adams, and keep them doing their good work to keep us on top of our safety list. But to the officers, I want all the police officers out there to realize that the citizens of Glendale look up to you. And oftentimes, the first impression someone gets from Glendale is an interaction with a police officer. And it's a tough job being a police officer. You don't know if that person behind the wheel is going to pull a gun and shoot you or whether it's going to be, it's just a harried soccer mom who's late for her soccer practice. But please, I'd like all the officers to maintain your soft side. Feel free to say hello, parev, buenos dias, yavoseo, to our residents. These impressions will be lasting ones. We have counted on our excellent fire department. Chief Gray, you've never let us down, and we are going to support you fully. However, my mind is always going to be open for any sort of efficiencies that we can identify in the department. Your men put your lives in at, at risk for property, for our lives, we do appreciate it. Please keep an open mind. It's a big part of our budget, and as the budget dollars get tight, we owe it to everyone to, to try and be as efficient as possible. We've got community development issues with Madeline, I don't know if Madeline's here. One of the biggest complaints we hear about is the need for housing for seniors and for low-income and moderate-income people. And every opportunity, I'd like you, Madeline, to let us know when we have the ability to put some senior housing or some low-income housing in. The housing and the rents are just out of this roof, through the roof, and we owe it to our residents to help them, and help the seniors and the elderly who don't have the income to live in a dignified and, and humanistic manner. We are going to be a premier city, folks, I've said it, I've said it before, you just wait and see what's happening. We've got Hassan Hrani at work with all of these projects that are coming in, the luxury condos, the development downtown, we've got Disney ready to expand. These are exciting times. Phil Landsafame is bringing new businesses in. These are clean businesses. These are businesses that, that cities and towns across the country would, would die to have coming in, and we're so fortunate that we've set up our city in such a manner where they're looking at Glendale. In fact, today, the mayor's party, we've got a huge record company, I'm not taking the wind out of your sails, am I, with that? Okay. A huge record company coming in, and they're identifying Glendale as the next Beverly Hills. We really have to, we really have to think about that, folks. I want to commend all the private organizations that work so hard in the city, the charities, the Salvation Army, the churches, synagogues, youth groups, AYSO, Little League. You all play a role that's, that's key to our success of being a healthy and balanced city. Keep up your good work, we're going to support you whenever we can. Well, to my friends who visit us at city council, Margaret, Herbert, Barry, I mean, I truly mean that, that you're my friends. Don't you ever stop coming, because you are often the, the first alert that we have to many of these issues. Margaret, you were talking about these banquet halls years ago, and it certainly, maybe took us a while to deal with it, but, but it's certainly on our plate now, and we're dealing with it. Please don't stop coming to council, please don't stop talking, don't worry about offending us, we've got thick skins. And to my colleagues, let's, let's really be the best council we can be. Each one of us brings something to the table that's unique, and with all of us working together and cooperating, there's no reason why we can't get through these issues. Now, we're not always going to agree, but at the end of the day, let's feel free to shake each other's hands, pat each other on the back, put aside any differences, because it's through the give and take and the argument and the, the exploring of each other's positions that we're really going to get to the truth. And that's how we're going to advance our city. And lastly, I know you're happy about that. While I was in Washington several weeks ago, I found myself staring at the, the great seal of the United States, and I think you all know that, it's on the back of the dollar bill. It's got the e pluribus unum, the eagle. Of course, e pluribus unum, from many, there is one. I think that speaks a lot about the city of Glendale. And I also looked down and I, I looked at the eagle. It's a fierce, proud bird, and in one talon, it is holding a quiver of arrows. And that symbolizes that we're ready to go to war, and we're ready to fight for what we want. But in the other talon is the olive branch, symbolizing our desire for peace. Now, I know that all of us perhaps have enough arrows in our quiver, but I'm not sure that we all have enough olive branches, so, ladies and gentlemen, I've brought some of my own. Okay. And I, um, I brought these to give to the, the mayor, whoever it was going to be, and I guess I ended up using it myself. But ladies and gentlemen, I, I can't believe I'm mayor, but thank you. My wife is going to kill, can I bring him back tomorrow? Okay. Thank my wife and children and, and all my supporters, and thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. The next, the next item, Mr. Clerk, is...
Is you are to give a plaque to the outgoing mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I was proud to nominate you last year for mayor. I'm proud that you accepted, and I'm very proud at the way you moved our city forward. It's never an easy road, the target now is off you and it's on me. I'm a bigger target than you are. So for your dedication to the city, to Mayor Dave Weaver, 2006 to 2007. Thank you.
Councilmember Najarian, that was a beautiful gesture. We've just found out, though, that Councilmember Yusefian is allergic to the olive branches as well.
I'm not taking it because I'm, I'm allergic to it, so. Oak sycamore olives.
In, in, in all seriousness, as, as the person who was chairing the meeting this evening, I would like to, with... evening, I would like to, with the permission of the council members up there, adjourn this evening's meeting in the memory of those who lost their lives at Virginia Tech earlier this morning. And if there's a motion to adjourn...
So moved. We'll be so adjourned. Thank you.
Take care. Good two minutes to go.